Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Titusville City Council Meeting of December 10, 2019 at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum. I'll call this meeting to order. Clerk, please read the procedures for public comment.
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issues more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items.
Thank you, clerk. We were scheduled to have a minister here, but I don't see that person, so I think we will just have a moment of silence. Please join me. Are you the minister, ma'am? Are you the minister? We will have an invocation this evening. You just made it.
That's quite an accident.
Okay. And this is Dr. Lila Jane Tibbetts. Thank you, ma'am, if you will.
That's a bad accident.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. You were in an accident?
You're ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm so sorry.
It's quite all right. Understandable.
Well, Father, here we are. This is the end of this coming year, this year. Lord, we've done a lot. They've done a lot, made a lot of decisions. Hopefully, some that they're very proud of, some they may not be so proud of, but they've voted to do things for Titusville that will enhance our lives. And we thank you, Lord, for all of these that help show the way here in Titusville to the best of their ability. We ask you, Lord God, to just bless them. Give them your mind. Help them to make those decisions that need to be made, and to make them because they believe in what they're doing. And we give you praise, Lord, that we live in a free country where we can have prayer, where we can gather together. We give you all the praise, Lord, as they go about their business this last month of the year. We give you all the praise, Lord, in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, ma'am. Please join me in the pledge.
My pledge is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And mayor and council, before we get to the agenda, we do have a couple of agenda adjustments we'd like to propose to council. We'd like to withdraw items 9A and 9F. And at your last meeting, you chose to take this item 9E to the Titusville Environmental Commission, so we're requesting that you table 9E to your meeting on the 28th of January
We can make that motion now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd make that motion.
That's kidding.
Actually, there's several motions.
Can we do it collectively?
I think so.
Yes. So we want to continue.
I mean, 6A.
You want to withdraw 9A and 9F?
Oh, sorry.
We want to withdraw 9A and 9F and continue the...
You want to table 9E?
To January 28.
At 6:30.
At 6:30.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Any other items that...
That's it.
Okay. We have approval of minutes. Did we do that one? What's happened, approval of minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of regular city council meeting on November 12, 2019.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like signed, passes unanimously. Is this from before, or do you have something else? All right. We have no special recognitions. Next item, sir?
Yes, sir. Accept the Titusville Environmental Commission semi-annual report, and I believe it's as written, since I don't see a presenter.
As you know, presenters, let's have a motion to accept the report.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the Titusville Environmental Commission semi-annual report as written.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like signed, passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
Yes, sir. Item 6B. This is the North Brevard County Hospital District Board. The terms of regular member Herman Cole, United States Air Force Colonel Retired, sorry, expires on 31 December 2019. He has expressed his willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2023. Currently, there are no other applications on file for your consideration. In addition, the Brevard County Board of Commissioners appointed Jeffrey Knothel with a term to expire on December 31, 2023. His appointment was made on November 19, 2019, and must be confirmed by our city council.
Is Jerry Knothel?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I have a motion on these items.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And council have to abstain from this because of perceived conflict of interest since I'm on the North Brevard Board.
If you like, that's fine. You'll make a motion?
I'll make my motion. I move to appoint Herman Cole as a member of the North Brevard Hospital District Board for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2023, and confirm the appointment of Jeffrey Knothel for a term to expire on December 31, 2023, although, as an aside, I wonder who ranks higher.
You mean, never mind. Yeah, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed, same sign, passes unanimously. Next.
One abstention.
One abstention.
Oh, there was one. Oh, yeah, with one abstention. That's correct. I'm sorry. I forgot that. Next item, please.
Item 6C is the North Brevard Economic Development Zone. The terms of regular members Michael Lloyd and Don Mount expire on December 31, 2019. They have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2023. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
Okay. Do we motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Don Mount and Michael Lloyd for a term that will expire December 31, 2023.
I have a motion. Have a second. I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like signed, passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Item 6D is the Plan and Zoning Commission. Currently, Robin Taylor serves as an alternate member with a term to expire on January 31, 2020. She has expressed her willingness and desire to serve on this board as a regular member with an expired term, to expire on January 31, 2021. And if not appointed as a regular member, she will continue to serve as an alternate member. Suzanne Noel Copeland currently serves as an alternate member but does not wish to be desired as a regular member. Currently, there's one additional application on file for your consideration. Ms. Suzanne, and I can never, I'm not going to pronounce it correctly, ma'am, Idelson?
Idelson.
Has expressed her willingness and desire to serve on this board as a regular member with an unexpired term to expire on January 31, 2020, or as an alternate member with an unexpired term to expire on January 31, 2020. Her application is part of your packet.
Before I ask for a motion, I want to make a comment. Ms. Taylor has been on the board quite some time as an alternate member. It certainly should be considered in your vote. I did read Ms. Idelson's application. It's very impressive, ma'am. Everything you've done is great, but we could make an alternate, and then she could come forward later on when there's something open. So I will accept the motion at this point.
That was going to be my suggestion, and I have talked to Sue about it, and I've talked to Robin about it. Robin originally was a member, and when Joe Richardson came up, we appointed him as opposed to Robin. And in part, it was because Joe had written so much of the code. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robin Taylor as the regular member, and Sue Idelson as the alternate. I believe that we will have another opening fairly shortly.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just for clarity. I don't have a problem with it. I'm just, I didn't know if, because it wasn't agenda, can we do that?
Right. I would suggest at this point, appoint the regular. That will open it up, but then we could take applications, and I would handle the alternate at your next meeting. Right, because then that position doesn't exist now. Once you make that appointment, it will exist, and then it'll give others to file applications and handle it at your next meeting.
All right. Thank you.
So in that case, I'll amend my motion to appoint Robin Taylor, and then we can consider the alternate next meeting.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second, hold. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like signed, passes unanimously. Excellent.
I understand. I saw Mr. Majek walk in. I didn't know if we wanted to hear from him on the TEC.
Okay. Do we not want to do Ms. Taylor at this point? City attorney, is there? Maybe I misunderstood what you said.
We did. We did.
Oh, that was part of it? Oh, is it? See, I misunderstood everything you said.
Right. The motion was to appoint Ms. Taylor as a regular member of the board. Now, that will create an alternate position, and that will be handled at your next...
No, I thought you wanted it separated, too. I just misunderstood what you said. That's okay. It worked that way. You know what I'm saying?
So my question is, Mr. Majek walked in. I didn't know if he wanted to present anything from the TEC or not. Okay.
We're not going to meet now until January.
Okay.
Okay, it's a written report. Do I have a motion on that?
No. If we need anything now, we already accepted it.
Where have I been? Petitions and requests. Does anybody wish to speak under petitions and requests?
I'm here to explain somewhat my sign. And this is the sign that you've seen a number of times. It's been here since September. And so I have a, I've sent to you an explanation of the sign. And I would like to say, first of all, so I'm reading from part of a letter that I sent to you today, and I'm just quoting from it. It says, "Our city government has been hardworking, honest employees, however..." And I'm skipping to another section. It says, "At the council meeting of February 12, 2019, our city manager and mayor surprised me and many others with their shocking announcement of city's revelation of uncorrected engineering errors and incompetence by me. They falsely claimed that Titusville hired engineers to review my findings of facts, and that city has spent about $70,000 to an independent engineering organization that reviewed without my knowledge my lengthy correspondence from 2012 to 2019." That's over 400 pages. "And that these engineers reported and determined as false my inconvenient findings of facts of city's engineering errors and deceptions. Wow! Of course, none of this is true. This fabrication is ridiculous and ironically claims that I, Stan Johnston, registered professional engineer for 43 years, Talbada Pine Engineering Honorary Society and retired engineer from the city in 2008, am wrong and incompetent in about everything that I wrote to city about, from 2012 to 2019. Wow! Unfortunately for our mayor and city manager, their malicious story is self-evident and undeniably false, and has absolutely no truth. On this matter, well, why? Because our city has been unable to locate this secret report about me and this engineering review that city pays about $70,000 for. They're unable to find the contract for this work." And that's, there it says, "Contract, $70,000, 2012, 2019." Unable to find the contract for this work, and unable to name this independent engineering Double wow! For the past 10 months, our four council members enable and support this outrageous, malicious, dishonest, and vindictive rumors and fraud. So that's what local politics is like in our hometown. I'm just reading from this, and it's similar to the dishonesty in our national politics. And I listed here, like Hillary's wild and malicious room, wild and notorious claims of being under sniper fire while she landed at the Bosnian airport. And of course, I'm angry about this, and...
Time's up, sir.
Okay. I said five seconds. Okay. So may I have more time? Another minute?
Just a comment, not a question. Mr. Johnston, you have come up for at least a couple of years. I keep saying the same. Mr. Johnston, stay there. It's my comment. Say the same thing over and over. You have apparently even offered a substantial reward if people can find something. I'm not even sure what it is to do with that. And you know what it is when you keep doing the same thing over and over and expect a different result? I don't know why you're doing this, why you continue to do this. We've heard it so many times. Why don't you find something else, at least? Make it a little interesting. But with that, we'll go on to the next item. Consent agenda, sir?
Yes, council, is any council member who want to pull any of the consent agenda items, which runs A through H?
I hear none.
Clerk, are there any cards for the consent? With council's permission, I'll read for the record the consent agenda items.
Go right ahead, sir.
Consent agenda item 8A. Approve the purchase of a trailer-mounted screw press from Process Wastewater Technologies, LLC of Rosedale, Maryland, in the amount of $530,200, and authorize the city manager to issue the purchase order necessary for the purchase. Consent agenda item 8B. Approve the attached budget amendment transferring flag and memorial committee funds totaling $7,220 from the restricted accounts into the non-restricted accounts in order to make the purchases listed in your agenda. Consent agenda item 8C. Approve the award to AECom Technical Services Incorporated in the amount of $65,770 to provide engineering consulting services, including but not limited to the preparation of needs assessment and facilities, space planning study, and authorize the mayor to execute the work order. Consent agenda item 8D. Approve the award to CDM Smith Incorporated in the amount of $171,173.12 to provide engineering consulting services, including but not limited to preparation and design and specifications permitting, bidding, and limited construction services for the replacement of the effluent screen at the Osprey wastewater reclamation facility, and authorize the mayor to execute the work order. Consent agenda item 8E. Approve the award to AECom Technical Services Incorporated in the amount of $198,792 to provide engineering consulting services, including but not limited to improving the reliability of wastewater infrastructure along the Indian River Lagoon, including a hydraulic model, review of forced main and lift station failure, asset risk assessment, and recommendations for improvements, and authorize the mayor to execute the work order. Consent agenda item 8F. Approve change number, change order number eight to LMR Construction Incorporated of Frostproof, Florida, in the amount of $60,743.92 to furnish and install additional cure-in-place pipe, CIPP, linear in various areas throughout the city, and authorize the mayor to execute the change order. Consent agenda item 8G. Approve the use of the Florida Sheriff's Association Cooperative Purchasing Program to purchase budgeted vehicle replacements to Next Train Truck Center of Orlando, Florida, in a total amount of $943,952.42 for the purchase of five vehicles. Additionally, approve the associated budget amendments transferring additional funds to the capital outlay projects for this purchase. Consent agenda item 8H. Approve the attached budget amendment for the purchase of TASER 7 in the amount of $157,709.70 from Axon Enterprises Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to issue the necessary purchase order requirements.
Okay. I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve agenda items 8A through 8H.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'm hearing any. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
We are to 9B, which is the reinstatement of the drop, and this will be a public hearing. City attorney.
Correct. This is the second reading of public hearing of this item. This is ordinance number 43, 2019. An ordinance of the city of Titusville amending Chapter 15 pensions and retirement, Article 3 Police Officers and Firefighters Pension Plan of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Titusville, amending Section 15222, benefits effective June 30, 2013, amending Section 13, I'm sorry, Section 15233 Deferred Retirement Option Plan, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability of provisions, and providing an effective date.
The proposed reinstatement of the drop was negotiated through the collective bargaining process with the FOP and IAFF unions contingent on the ratification of their prospective collective bargaining agreements. There is a summary of the components of the drop included in your packet.
I'll accept the motion on this.
I agree to create ordinance number 43, 2019, reinstatement.
I think you're going to need to open the public hearing first, mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it is a public hearing. Okay. I'm trying to rush it through here. Didn't work. I'm going to open the public hearing in a second. I'll write it myself. Clerk, are the cards on this item?
No, sir.
Staff, any comments you want to make?
We just received one card.
You're late, sir. Let me do it. Okay. Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Mr. Johnston? You've been called.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm here for approval of this, and I'm here especially to bring to concern to you about the budgeting of the city of Titusville, and this is a, this is an item that's going to cost the city money. And I want you to remember back in 2018, I'll be part of 2017, that the city was talking about that we're about to fall off a cliff, and even the word bankruptcy was used in February of 2018. And there was even a 27-minute meeting in which I don't think anybody else was present except council meeting for requesting of using of Rule 13. And the question I've asked CRA before was, what is this money going to be used for that we need to save, like, for example, for the $6 million parking garage and so forth? So with this in mind, I have an article before me, November 19, 2019, and the title of the article is Plans Drop For, this is from Space Coast, Florida, or Florida Today, Plans Drop For $23 Million Titusville Complex, and that's the sports complex that had been proposed, which I thought had been dropped a long time ago. So in this consideration, I believe that the city has the money... So, in this consideration, I believe that the city has the money that can afford to do this pension monies, giving it and so forth, whatever it may be, because we, I believe we have the money, and we're not going to fall off a cliff, as was said at a council meeting, and we're not going, about to go bankrupt. Thank you. Any questions?
I see none, sir.
Not a question, I have a statement to add.
Go right ahead.
All right. Just so you know, Mr.--
It's a statement, sir. You can--
Just a statement, yeah. We do have a letter from our actuaries that actually says that we have no impact on the assumptions used in determining the funding requirements of this program, so it's not costing us anymore.
Okay. Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There is no applicant, so I'll close the public hearing. I'll ask for a motion.
I'll get you.
You do. You do. Your turn.
Move to pass ordinance number forty-three dash twenty nineteen reinstatement of deferred retirement option plan for police and firefighters' unions.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Or Mayor Johnson, sorry. Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
And Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
Next item is item nine C, which is ordinance number forty-four, two thousand and nineteen, Plant Nurseries and Community Commercial. This is the second public hearing of this item. Ordinance number forty-four, two thousand and nineteen, An Ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter twenty-eight, zoning, Section twenty-eight, two fifteen, plant nursery, to establish plant nurseries as a limited use in the community commercial CC zoning district, and providing for appeal of the plant nursery pilot program, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date, and incorporation into the land development regulations.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance on November twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, and recommended approval five zero. In August two thousand and eighteen, City Council adopted ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand and eighteen, creating a pilot program to allow plant nurseries and community commercial zoning. The pilot program, which included conditions under which the plant nurseries could be approved without certain improvements, was deemed by council to be a success. The proposed ordinance would allow the plant nurseries permitted during the pilot program, as well as new plant nurseries, as a limited use in the community commercial zoning district. In the event that the plant nursery does not choose to construct certain improvements, provisions for the use are included in the standards. And Ms. Busaka is available to answer questions that you may have, and this is your second public hearing of ordinance forty-four, two thousand and nineteen. Will require a roll call.
Yes, sir. Ms. Busaka, how are you this evening?
I'm well, thank you.
Do you have any comments or presentation?
I'm just here to answer questions. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Busaka?
No.
I see none. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
We have one card. It's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm here to support it, and I was just here in case there were some objections to the, and I don't see any objections at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards?
No, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any discussion on this item? I'll ask for motion then.
Move to approve ordinance number forty-four dash twenty nineteen, Plant Nurseries and Community Commercial, and I would say staff did a great job.
Great. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please, clerk.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, please, sir.
Next item is nine D, ordinance number forty-five, two thousand and nineteen, Capital Improvement Element Annual Update. This is the second reading and public hearing of this item. Ordinance number forty-five, two thousand and nineteen, An Ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, Updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four horizon relating to the capital improvement element, and providing for an effective date.
The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning agency, considered this ordinance at their December fourth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting, and recommended approval with comments discussed by the members, which is part of your attachment. The vote was five zero. Florida statute requires that the city's five-year capital improvement program of the capital improvement element be updated annually. All local governments are required to include a CIE in their comprehensive plan that considers the need for and location of public facilities, and provides a component that outlines the principal construction, extension, or increase in capacity of public facilities, as well as a component that outlines principles for correcting existing public facility deficiencies, which are necessary to implement the comprehensive plan. The planning period for this element is five years, and Ms. Busaka is available to answer questions that council may have on this matter.
Counsel, have any questions of Ms. Busaka? See none? You have a presentation or comment? None? Okay. Open the public hearing. Clerk, do we have any cards on this item?
Yes, sir. We have one card from Stan Johnston.
Mr. Johnston?
Stan Johnston, eight sixty points at Avenue. I don't think I can be considered as an expert witness on this. Is that correct?
I was just pointing out, this is a legislative matter, not quasi judicial.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So, I'm reading from the same thing I just passed out from you, and it's, I'm opposed to this capital improvement because it ignores some needs of the city that are required and have been accepted by council in years past. And that is, so I'll read it to you. It says, "Failure, the city of Titusville failed to have canals, floodways maintained and proved located outside of city limits," and this is especially, we're talking about between Foxlick Road and State Road fifty west of I ninety-five. And this is required by city's stormwater master plan and for flood protection. The city has nothing in their capital improvements to, to, to take care of this, which is, which is in our stormwater master plan, very clearly in our stormwater master plan, and it says that it's needed to be done. So, I've quoted this to the city a number of times, and it's not there. So, it seems that even though Mr. Jordan and Mr. Diesel, they signed a petition some time ago that they've, apparently they've changed their mind, that these, these do not need to be done, but according to our stormwater master plan is it should be done, and I even have a document from the county saying that it should be done also. I don't have that with me at this time. So, the city has not paid one penny, one penny or one dollar towards any capital improvements projects to remove any house from the flood zone for the last forty years. I think that's significant, because the stormwater master plan is supposed to protect houses. So, when you, when you don't, when you exclude the need to get these houses out of the flood zone, I think you're doing a disservice to the community, and you are. You are. So, there's no, I can't find any engineer who will dispute many of my findings in writing. So, this is required of the stormwater master plan, and you're neglecting to do it. So, I'm asking you to put it in the capital improvement plan. Any questions?
I see none, sir.
You've got problems in your firm app, and the firm app is incorrect. It was shown to be incorrect by your two thousand and sixteen LoMar, and I've asked you to, to do it for the Parkland Estate subdivision. There's a dam out there at the Parkland Estate subdivision. Permit says that it, it produces more water on the property by two hundred acre feet. The area is only about a hundred feet, I mean, a hundred acres, and that's sixty-five million gallons of water, and it floods property.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
I'll, we have no other cards on this. I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, Member Nelson?
I did have a question for Ms. Busaka.
Sir?
Nobody's picked on her all night.
Might as well get her now.
Yeah, might as well get her.
Hidden leg.
Yeah. Before she runs. Peggy, I understand why not, why wouldn't, we would not put reclaimed water in the, in the plan, capital improvement plan, but what about stormwater, anything to protect the lagoon?
There, you may notice that there are additional, on page one ninety-eight, there are additions of water quality improvements, starting in FY twenty of a quarter million dollars, and two hundred thousand dollars a year for the next four years after that, for a total of one million, fifty thousand dollars from the stormwater utility.
Thank you for pointing that out to me. Sometimes I get lost in all those numbers.
I appreciate you giving me a softball.
Moving right along. Ready for a motion on this item?
I move to approve ordinance number forty-five dash two oh one oh nine, Capital Improvements Element Annual Update.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oh, no. I'm sorry. Just--
So, we need--
It's a roll call. Yeah. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item will be item G, which is rezoning number three, two thousand and nineteen. This is the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number forty-nine, two thousand and nineteen. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five, nineteen ninety-three, of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a partisan ordinance by reference by replacing the present general use GU zoning district to community commercial CC zoning for a three point two seven acre property located at twenty-nine fifty-five Columbia Boulevard, and providing for an effective date.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this, five zero. The applicant, Brooke Stickler, on behalf of the property owner, Launched Now Credit Union, is requesting to amend the existing zoning designation on the property totaling three point two seven acres located at twenty-nine fifty-five Columbia Boulevard from general use to community commercial. The rezoning will be, is being requested to allow a reuse of the former Elks Lodge building into a financial institution. Ms. Busaka is available to answer questions that you may have had, and this is the final public hearing on rezone number three dash two thousand and nineteen. Will require a roll call vote.
Ms. Busaka, any comments?
I just wanted to say that the staff has reviewed this, that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan at the character of the area, and that there are no issues with concurrency, and the staff recommends approval.
Okay. Yes, sir. Do you have a comment?
Yes, please. I just wanted to say, and thank you, Ms. Busaka, I just wanted to say that this strikes me as being one of the outstanding reuses we've done with the facility. You know, I've heard before recently that there's going to come a time in Titusville where we won't develop, we'll redevelop. I think that this, this just strikes me as outstanding, and, you know, quite honestly, knowing and talking to some of the Elks members, they're really excited that they were able to, you know, not only make a move, but make a move to help improve Titusville. So, I'm pretty excited about this one. So, thank you, guys.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing and ask for motion. You have yours, but you're first. He wants to make a comment, I think.
Move to approve rezoning number three dash twenty nineteen from general use, changing the zoning from general use to community commercial for the property located at two-nine-five-five Columbia Boulevard.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear none? Is, is this? Is the roll call? Yes. Okay. I'm looking for the ordinance, but, okay, roll call vote, please, clerk.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Really got to know, well, maybe she said mayor. Say mayor or member. Going fast here. Every time I mess it, mess gets me. Next item, please.
Yes, sir. We are now to item twelve A, which is the Titusville Farmington, Tifa LLC, FY twenty-twenty budget, and FY twenty-twenty-one pro forma, and our Water Resources Director, Sean Soffler, is here to provide a presentation along with our representative, Mr. Ball.
Good evening. Wanted to welcome Jim Ball tonight with me. He is the city of Titusville's representative on the Tifa board, and he'll be here to talk a little bit about Tifa and what he does on the board for the city, and answer any questions that you might have from his perspective. So, we'll go through a brief presentation, and just want to take this opportunity to kind of remind everybody how we got to where we are now, and what Tifa is. Tifa is a public-private partnership between the city of Titusville and Miami Corporation, and this, and we are here to approve their annual budget, and this is the tenth budget for Tifa LLC. Before Area Four, the water for the city of Titusville came from the surficial aquifer. We had, at that point, we had two surficial wellfields, which we still have today, Area Two Wellfield, which is in the north end of town, and the Area Three Wellfield, which is near the south end of town by Barna. This is a single-source water aquifer. Some other characteristics of a surficial aquifer, it is undefined, lies close to land surface, is typically less than fifty, fifty feet thick, and is susceptible to contamination and saltwater intrusion. And so, we talk about, so what are the problems, or what were the problems back then? We had, population projections were increasing, as well as we were having problems with the water quality from those surficial wellfields. So, in nineteen ninety-nine, the city commissioned a study to find a new water source for the future of the city of Titusville. The objective was to find a safe, reliable, and economically feasible supply. The results of that study, we identified five alternative sources for future water in Titusville. The most expensive was to increase the current purchases from the city of Cocoa that we were doing at that time. What we found to be the most feasible option was to develop the Area Four Wellfield. And to help locate everyone, here's a map. You can see towards the center of the map, the highlighted section are the boundaries of the city of Titusville, and the orange polygon up to the left, that would be northwest on the map, that is where the Area Four Wellfield is located, and that is the extreme northwestern section of Brevard County. So, talk a little bit about Tifa. It was established in twenty-ten. It functions solely as a raw water utility. It includes an administrative board, holds public hearings, and it is a fifty-fifty partnership between the city of Titusville and Miami Corporation, and is owned fifty-fifty. I'll hand it over to Jim now, and if he wants to add anything about his duties as a board member for the city.
Mr. Ball?
Very, very little to add, actually. It's my, it's really an honor to represent the council and the, and the people of Titusville is there, representative on this very unique structure of a, of a partnership. It's, from my perspective, and of course, I serve at your pleasure, appointed by the council to be that representative, it's unlike any other board, but in my few years of serving in that capacity, I can't begin to tell you how impressed I've been with the partnership, with our partners, Farm Ten, how well they work hand in hand with us. The city, of course, is the operating entity, and so, we oversee the things that, that staff is doing to operate the, the wellfield, and I'm very, I can tell you, I'm very, very impressed and pleased with the way the Water Resources Department carries out that function. I speak with Sean frequently about any, any issues, and there really are far and few between that come up. We've discussed this budget. It was, as many other-- It was, as many other budgets, a challenge as things, you know, increase in cost, and I was very impressed, and I'm just here to back up Sean. I think he's done a great job of trying to contain the cost of operations and what that translates into the, into the cost of the raw water to the greatest extent that's possible. But I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I think Sean's the real expert there.
I don't see any questions, but I'd like to make a couple of statements, one is I totally agree with you. I think our staff does a great job. They're, just everything they put forth is done well, and although we have some people who like to complain about a lot of things, I don't think anybody up here feels that way. And I also want to say to you, Mr. Ball, that I really appreciate your doing this. This is a major project for us, and it is our future water, and it's going to allow us to expand our community. So it's very important, and I know from working on, with you on, in your previous job out of the Space Center, you are very dedicated. When you, when you take a hold of something, you make sure you get a good handle on it and understand it, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure the rest of council does as well. With that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, both of you gentlemen. Any other questions from council?
We have a few more slides.
Oh, do you?
Yes, we do.
I thought you were through.
Thank you very much. Just added a few slides this year. As Jim discussed, you know, we took a very close look at the expenses and the resulting rate that the city does pay to Tifa for the raw water, and so just wanted to go through some of the budget drivers and some of our assumptions as we prepared the budget. We're estimating a 7% increase for our audit and tax preparation fees. That equates to about $1,000. This increase is going to be based on the existing contract that we have with Moore Stevens and Lovelace will be rebid, so we're expecting to see a little bit of an increase as we go out to bid for those services. Insurance costs, we are estimating a 5% increase this year. We have heard back from the insurance companies and our consultants that handle this, that to expect an increase in the cost. This has been typical, about 5%. I will say that at Mr. Ball's suggestion, we're going to analyze the effect of changing our deductibles to see what that would do and if that will lower the cost. We are hopeful that that will help with the cost. I'll also say, in the 10 years that we have been operating and insured, there have been no claims or losses associated with the wellfield. So we think we have a good track record. One of the concerns with insurance costs is since this is somewhat of a unique entity that we don't, there's not a lot of, not a lot of people bid for our business, and so for the past few years, it has been the same company each year that has insured us. So we think since there's not as much of a market for our type of facility, I think that's why we, that's why we can see these 5% increases. So, but this is what we're budgeting. We'll hope to work that through and get some lower costs. One of the other items that we'll be doing this year, we're going to be purchasing an additional mower. We spend quite a bit of time in Area 4 mowing, and this not only keeps the area around the wellfields clean, sanitary, as well as it helps prevent forest fires. You know, as you can see from the map we showed, this is in a pretty rural area, it's hard to get to, so one of the things we want to make sure of is that there are wide, clear areas around the wells, so that if there is issues with forest fires, that it won't approach the wells, and that helps limit any of our damage. One of the other budget drivers that's new for this year is we'll be reaching out for a consultant or for a contractor to do our major ion testing and sampling, and this year, we're going to do that because we've got a number of vacancies within our water production group, as well as our laboratory. We've had this work done on another project for Area 4, received very good prices from the company, and so to help kind of bridge this gap for this year, we're going to have a contractor take care of that for us. We've also, we're estimating a 5% increase in our power costs, and this is substantiated from information that we received from our contact at FPNL. They're expecting anywhere from a 4% to a 7% increase for commercial accounts. The next one, this talks about the mileage rate, and as Jim mentioned, we are the service provider for Area 4, we're the maintenance entity, and so part of, whenever we go up and do work, we create a work order, and we reimburse for our mileage and our time to do that work. And so I've separated this out because this actually ends up being a positive for the city, because we'll recoup these costs through our work orders. We've noticed that our costs have gone up for 2020, but we will recoup this amount. So, so while it is a cost increase to Tifa, the city will not be affected by that. And so we spent some time kind of going back and forth to see what the overall impact, and it looks like the total cost increase to the city that we'll see is approximately $18,000 over last year. That includes some of the labor and cost savings from the outside sampling, as well as the mileage and some other items in the budget. I have confirmed with our rate consultant that that $18,000 overall annual increase will not affect the water rate for the drinking water rate to our customers. And so we put together kind of a little historical slide here. This is something that we do during the city's water rate discussions, and so last year, the cost, the estimated cost for 1,000 gallons was $1.14. During my presentation last year, we had estimated that the cost for water this year would be $1.15. The current estimates, we've stayed the same for 2019, and for 2020, the budget that I am presenting tonight, we are estimating the cost to be $1.16 per 1,000 gallons of raw water. So from all the budget drivers that I discussed, we do show an increase of 1 cent over what I, 1 cent per 1,000 over what I had projected it would be last year. And so we come to the end, and what we're requesting tonight is that city council adopt the 2020 Tifa LLC budget and authorize the mayor to execute the consent of members associated with the budget, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you have at this time.
Any questions or discussions? Member Nelson?
Sad, just one question for Mr. Ball also. We're paying $3,500 for fluorine power and light extra this year. What about using solar? Is it feasible? Is it something that we could do?
The, the equipment that we have on site requires three-phase power, which is a high-voltage power, and you would not be able, we would not be able to provide that with solar.
Okay, thanks.
I think the other thing I would add to that would be the capital. There would be probably a significant capital investment, even if you could use the power.
Vice Mayor?
Estimated 5% increase in insurance cost, excuse me, and you talked about perhaps moving the, or dealing with the deductible. What's our deductible now?
I asked that question at the last meeting, and they were going to have to do a little bit of investigation into that.
Yeah. I don't have it with me.
Okay.
But it, it's, it's, it seems like the property loss risk is, is relatively small, it's not zero.
And that's what I was going to, my next point was going to be, you know, what kind of claims do we make out there? What would the insurance cover?
It would be for catastrophic events, and so that.
To the wellfield itself, if there was, you know, wildfire, or what would happen?
And we had this discussion last week, and we think that if there was, if, if one of the wellheads was hit by a vehicle, you could cause damage to the well casing, which is underground, and any damage to that casing renders it unusable. And so what could happen, if it could not be repaired, you would have to drill a whole new well, start all over again.
And that would be one of the insurance things that we're dealing with here. That's what the insurance is to do.
That's correct, and that, you know, the, the cost to put in a new well would be $300,000 to $400,000.
Okay. I'd be interested in the deductible, not that it's going to change anything, I would just be interested. All right, thank you.
I have a question also on insurance, because I noticed that it's gone up, it probably went up more than anything else over the 10-year period as a percentage of what it started. Do they bid those, those contracts out, the insurance, at all, or how do they come, how do they come to a company?
I'm not an insurance expert, but from my discussions with Miami Core, and this, we divide the labor between the two parties, and one of the things that they handle for us is the insurance, and they have a consulting group, I think their name Marsh, Martian Marsh is the name of the group, and, and I believe what they do is they take the application, they, they package our business, and then they put it out to an insurance market. And I'm not sure physically how it happens, but when things go out to bid, then insurance companies can review that business and figure out whether or not that's something that they want to provide insurance on, and then they provide a bid back to Marsh and then back to the city and Tifa about what it would cost to insure it at those existing rates.
I will, I will say that I asked a lot of questions on, on the insurance because of the, and I'm going to keep on it, because it is one area that it seems like we can try to manage and attack growth in the budget. There's, there's certain other areas where there's, there's not a whole lot you can do, as you, you guys are dealing with it across all departments of the city. But in this case, where we're not self-insured because of the structure of the, of the organization of the entity, we, we, I promise, we'll, we'll continue to work on that one, and as well as some of the other things that have been drivers, going to, outside labor, outsourcing some of the, some of the functions seem to be a practical solution to the lack of, of being able to get people into the city, you know, the, the right skill sets and hiring the right, it actually became a more cost-effective way to go.
Do you have the name of the insurance company available to you, or can you get it?
I could certainly provide that.
Yes, would you give it to city manager, one of you?
I will.
Please, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I.
I think we have some cards.
Oh, we have cards?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry. Clerk, would you read the card, please?
We have one card, it's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 points, said, my understanding is this, this, the management of these wells is privatized, is that correct? Jim Ball or Soffler?
It's, it is a joint venture, if you will, it's a partnership that's 50% City of Titusville, 50% Farmington.
Okay. Here's what I'm, I'm concerned about, is that we've lost at least about, at least over $10 million on this wellfield over here that's south of 50, near Indian River City, I met this church, and there was a number of things that happened also in that, that it's not publicly known, it's never in the newspaper, like ponds going dry, people in Indian River City, the wells wouldn't, couldn't, went dry and so forth like that, just a number of problems that happened. And my concern is the privatization of the, and we also had, what I can see clearly to me is that we've overpumped a number of our wells and destroyed them, destroyed our wells by overpumping them, and to me, it's, it's undeniable. It's, it's shown in graphs and so forth, so, so I'm concerned that what we might do by, by privatization of the well pumping is that we can destroy this wellfield, and then where are we? We're back where we began, and this is, we've put a lot of money into this wellfield. So this has to do with our budgeting, who we're having, who we're having to do the work, and my concern is that, I also have relatives in Volusia County that have reported to me a number of times, the people have saying, hey, you know, my, my pond went down, what in the heck's going on? In other words, my pond went down. So I would request that Mr. Ball, you know, look into this, because I'm hearing these stories, and that's Volusia County, not Brevard County. So I think that the area of influence apparently includes Volusia County also, so that's another thing to look at. So at this time, I'm, I'm, again, I'm, I believe that privatization of, of the maintenance of the wellfields is likely not a good idea at all, because we've lost so much, lost so much. Any questions? Okay. I think you should do that. I think, I think the, if there's any people who are, I don't know their names, who, whose ponds have gone down because of the pumping, I think that should be reported to council. Thank you.
If I might add, offer a comment or two on that, I, it's okay, you can sit, Mr. Johnson. I just, for, for council's information and for the citizens that may be listening, as well as Mr. Johnson there, the, the pumping numbers are exactly what has been necessary to provide the drinking water that Titusville requires. We are not overpumping the wells beyond what's, it's not overpumping, it's, it's what the capacity was planned for those wells. As far as monitoring of the wells, the condition, it's discussed at every meeting. I've learned a lot about wells in the last couple of years, and water quality, and the fragility of the aquifer for the entire state, and it's a concern that's something many people in the state have about, you know, our water supply. But I can be confidently sure that we are doing everything we possibly can to protect that resource for Titusville, and it truly has not been privatized. The operation of the wells is the City of Titusville's responsibility under the partnership with Farmington, and the only thing that was enabled by this joint venture was the capital cost of constructing and, constructing the wells and entering into the agreement with the City of Titusville to operate the wells for the people of Titusville. You know, I don't think the city attorney would want to, or needs to add anything more to that, but it's, in that sense, it's really not a privatized operation.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
I, I thank you for saying that, because that was going to be my comment or reiteration from you, because the comment was made several times, private, private, private. The very first slide here shows, you know, the collaboration and a public slash private partnership with City of Titusville being the main character, and of course, that's what we want to hear, and I don't want it to come across any other way. Thank you for following up on that.
Any, any other cards, clerk? I'll close the public hearing. We need a motion, or two, maybe, but.
I can do a motion to adopt the Tifa 2020 budget and authorize the mayor to execute the consent of members.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Petitions and requests. Any cards, Kirk?
Yes.
Did she say yes or no?
No, sir, there's, there's nobody. Yep.
Thank you, clerk. Next item, mayor's report. You have my report in writing there. There wasn't a whole lot that went on, but some of the things were pretty enjoyable. The lighting of the Christmas tree at Irish Center, those spectacular, that tree is magnificent. I commend your board, sir. And the, the tree in front of City Hall here, that was a fun evening with all the chorus from Sculptor School. They're, they're always fun, the children, to, to listen to, they're a great group. With that, I go to council reports. Does anybody have anything I'd like to speak about, or?
Very briefly, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just quickly, I'm sure that we're all following your report, and, and that is that everything was great, and I will say that it kind of hit me today when I came into our meeting, what a beautiful tree outside, but then I walked in and I saw there's a beautiful tree inside, and if you haven't, and I just really, it just kind of hit me, I don't know that I've ever noticed it before. So, you know, there's just a lot of great things going on, and certainly want to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and we're going to buy lots and lots of candy for the parade on Saturday. I'm heading to Sam's Club.
Yes.
It's a true story. I won't go into the amount, but it's a lot of candy, so I look forward to that, and it's weird, we normally have a meeting after the parade, and we normally talk about. and we normally talk about, there's thousands of people out there. So to those thousands of people, we'll throw candy.
Or eating thousands of pounds...
Thousands of pounds of candy. So, yeah.
Not quite that much, but a lot.
But I just want to say, because it's kind of a little frustrating, we don't get to talk about it afterwards, but this town gets into holidays. This town comes together all the time. The lighting of the city Christmas tree, the mayor was speaking, we got to say something to the crowd, you know, it's just, it just feels like I said when I had my chance, it's like we're one big family, and this time of year, this city really shows that. And, you know, there are other cities in the area that may say, oh, the Titusville, whatever. Wouldn't trade it, wouldn't go anywhere but here. This is our family. So Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas, and we certainly, I think I speak for everybody when we agree entirely with that. Member Stokoe?
Just wanted to let you guys know, you know, one of the legislative priorities that the League's been working on is allowing local governments to be able to regulate smoking in public parks. That's been on my list for a while here, but the Senate Community Affairs Committee actually met yesterday. There was legislation filed to allow counties to be able to regulate beaches and parks, and they amended it to include municipalities as well, and it passed unanimously. So here's to being hopeful that we will continue to progress and that local governments will be allowed to make those decisions that are best for their communities.
Didn't you have a comment somewhere? Did you want to read that comment?
Nope, don't want to read that one.
Okay. Inside joke. Member Nelson?
And next year, two plastic bags, but besides that, I'm still on my plastic bag thing. I'm sorry. But, you know, really, you're talking 100 years to 500 years for it to disintegrate. I mean, that's, it's out there, it's in our bodies, and that just sort of freaks me out. But I wanted to say Merry Christmas to everybody, have a good holiday. If you're around Thursday, we are going to open that Carter House for about two hours, so from 4:00 to 6:00. So if anybody wants to come by and...
Thursday or next Thursday?
Next Thursday.
19?
19. So if anybody wants to come by and see why I show up every council meeting with paint on me, come by. We'd love to have you.
4:00 to 6:00?
Mm-hmm.
Great, thank you. Next item, city managers' report.
I have one action item for mayor and council. During Hurricane Dorian reimbursement signature authorization, the Florida Division of Emergency Management requires the city delegate signature authorization for storm-related documentation to designate its staff point of contact. Attached is a letter authorizing Lisa Kibuta to special projects coordinator and myself to sign pertinent storm-related documentations, and we will need a vote on this.
Member Jordan?
Yes, I move that we approve the delegation letter.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously.
Yes, sir. A couple of information items for council is the student advisory council is hosting its 2020 Youth Leadership Seminar in, on Thursday, February 27, 2020. That's going to be hard to say over and over again, 2020. From 8:00 to 3:00 at Parish Medical Center's conference room, the students would like to invite city council to attend this, and I believe, Vice Mayor, you actually spoke at one which was very enlightening for the students, and if we just have council participate sometime during that window, it doesn't require you to be there the whole time, the students would really appreciate council at least observing their activities there.
Can Virginia put it on our calendars?
We already have.
Okay.
Yep, but I just want to make sure you're aware of it. Next is, of course, the annual Christmas parade we talked about is this Saturday, December 14th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and starts at Titusville High School and ends in Broad Street, so we're looking forward to that. And I have one request to change the date of the CBDG special meeting from January 7, 2020, to January 21, 2020. We've had some submission issues with the actual folks applying through the RFP process, so we want to allow a little bit of extra time to get the RFPs back from the applicants. So if possible, we'd like to slide it to the 21st, for your approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move the CBDG meetings to January 21, 2020.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously.
And last, mayor and council, on behalf of the 532 employees, including Sergeant Cruz there in the back, we'd like to wish council a most joyous holiday break, Merry Christmas to you all, and you will now have five weeks without a council meeting.
Take a trip around the world.
So it's been a great year, and our employees just appreciate all that you do for our city, and we're looking forward to a great 2020 ahead.
And on behalf of the council, we appreciate what they do. We couldn't have done it without them and without you, sir, and you, sir, on the other end. You guys, everybody works very hard, we're accomplishing a lot, and I'm so proud of what has happened in the past few years. We went through some real bad dry spots before that, but boy, we came out with a vengeance, and it seems to be going nowhere but up from here, so I hope we'll have a great year next year as well, and I'm counting on it, frankly. With that, and also I want to thank, of course, Merry Christmas to all of the staff. You represent everybody today. Merry Christmas. And everybody in Titusville, and anybody else who's looking, Merry Christmas, God bless you, and stay safe, please. With that, unless there's any further discussion, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.